Good evening, today is Thursday, May 8th, 2014. It's currently 5:30. We are at Violet Avenue School. We have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining the employment, future employment, history of a particular person or persons, and the employment of a particular corporation in collective bargaining negotiations, please.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We now on executive session.
May I have a motion to return to regular session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Impose? Thank you very much. We now are scheduled to have a public hearing on the code of conduct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I feel a bit unprepared, but I know the documents are available and they're on the website. This is the proposed code of conduct. It has to be revised every year. So it's now up until when it is subject to approval, and any comments that people have should be sent to me. All that information is available on the website, and administration has already had input into the code of conduct.
Okay. Some of the minor things that touch a lot of things are new policies on e-cigarettes, which is probably one of the newest things that's on that. Now, at this point in time, if anybody has questions, you want to come to the mic and ask specific questions about the code of conduct, this is the time you get to do it.
And I'll add about e-cigarettes, that it's not required that we include that as prohibited, but we're choosing to do so.
Right. Okay, then we will close the public hearing, unless you want to come up? Yes? Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments, yeah.
Only on the code of conduct.
That's what this is for.
The only question I had is the policy of a cellphone search. And could you address that?
Yeah, there's two kinds of searches that can happen, and it has to do with whether something is private property or not. So cellphones were not specifically listed, though they were included as the kind of thing that we do not have the right to search without some just cause. So there has to be some information that comes to us, or if there's information about the phone and you see the first screen, and there's some reason to suggest that looking further would give us more information, we're allowed to do that, the same is with a backpack, which is considered private. So we don't, we can't just do random searches of backpacks or cellphones. So we just included cellphone because it's come up, and we felt the policy should really cover it, so people are aware that if there's just cause, that a cellphone could be searched.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a hearing, so it's different than the usual.
What would you consider to be just cause?
I'll give you one example from another district that was shared with me at a legal presentation. So what, the school had a cellphone policy that if you had it out and on at the wrong time, it would be held and then given back to you. And it popped up, you know, like you have an appointment reminder, and it was actually reminding the student to make a drug deal at a certain time on the, you know, popping up like four o'clock, go pick up or drop off the drugs. That was just cause for an officer to search the phone. But we couldn't just have a pile of cellphones that we had taken from kids who shouldn't have them and look at them, turn them on and look at them. So that would be, that was the one example.
And?
Or seeing smoke in a car smell, like that kind of thing would, has brought people to look in a car.
Legally, if you have a password on your phone, you're not obligated to give that password to somebody who asked for it. So it's kind of a, most times, if you talk to law enforcement people, they immediately ask to see their phone, and most people will say, oh sure, here, here's the phone. But if you say, well, it's locked, then I'm not going to give you the password, then they have to go get a court order. So it's, 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 there is some protection in there.
Oh, no, I, believe me, I wouldn't want to protect drug dealers or anything like that, but I don't know, it just, it just seems that, just something about it just seems wrong, and, you know, kind of like a violation of privacy. And with just cause, if the just cause is only because there was a pop-up or a notification that said there's something about a drug deal, even so, why does there need to be any further search into the phone, rather than just contacting the police immediately?
And that was, again, it wasn't in our district, and it was a story about, to try to get more information about who the other people are involved, who may be dealing drugs in the school.
But again, the police are conducting that search.
Wouldn't it be turned over to the police?
Exactly, the police are conducting that search.
It wouldn't be the district.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to comment, but I was actually a little uncomfortable with that myself, because, you know, I certainly believe very much in discipline and law and order, I'm certainly not looking to protect drug dealers or sexual predators or any of the sort, but it, it, you know, it does concern me, well, you know, for example, like, in this, the example that you were given, like, we're going to confiscate the phone because you're not supposed to have it, you know, where you took it out at an appropriate time, I'm okay with that, but I would like to think that it would be switched off, you know, and it just sits there benign, and when it's time to get your phone back, here you go, in the switched off condition. Like, this whole notion of, the only reason they found out about that pop-up message, again, glad they found out, however it's the way they found out, the only way they found out is because the phone was confiscated and turned over to them, and even though that they weren't digging around and a little pop-up popped up, it would seem to me that if you're going to confiscate a phone, as an example, then it should be turned off, you know, that you shouldn't have any access to what's going on in that phone, even though it's in your possession, it's not your phone, it's not your device. You know, I am always very clear that, you know, computers owned by the school are, you know, no expectation of privacy, lockers, any of our facilities, no expectation of privacy, they, you know, I fully support that, there are facilities, they're not, they don't belong to the individual student, so we have the right to go in and look around those things anytime we want, for any, you know, for any clause, but I do get a little uncomfortable with that notion of somebody, you know, for example, the police can't just go up to me without a warrant and say, give me your cellphone, I'm going to look at it.
That's correct.
And my employer even can't, it's not, and it's a company cellphone, because it's, they, there's certain things they can see, but they can't see, you know, because the phone company is very strict about that, because it's just, it's, it's one-way communication between two individuals, it's nobody else's business what that is, and, you know, there's really strict laws about that. So I, I'm okay with it being in the policy, but we ought to be real careful about it, because that's not something I want to get in the habit of doing, is rooting through people's electronic devices, you know.
Right.
But that's, that's all I would say about it.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah. No, I just want to make a comment, like you were saying with that, okay, and fine, there was a notification, and then, but the thing that I know, speaking with my phone, when I get a notification, the only way that I can see what that is, is to actually pick up the phone and look at it. So I'm just saying, in order for that to happen, somebody had to go looking where they, I know it didn't happen in this district.
Right, right.
But, and I understand that if the student has his cellphone out when he's not supposed to, it can be confiscated, and that seems to be okay, but it's just, you know, the matter of searching, and plus, if something was to be searched, if there was a notification to get further information, where would you go to? Would you go to text messages, call history apps like Twitter, Facebook, Instagram? I mean, where would, where would you begin to look for other information that might incriminate the person who's doing wrong?
You know, and I'll say, it's our preference not to be digging around until we find something. That's not, you know, chances are we would, we're not interested, enough comes to our attention. But, you know, now especially with the dignity act, and that we have a responsibility in cases of cyberbullying, you know, we've had to deal with things that happen outside of school as being part of our responsibility if they're impacting students in school. So it all comes out of that, and we just didn't want to leave the more obvious piece of private property that may come into play in an investigation, like a cellphone, out of the policy, and then have people be really surprised if something happens as part of an investigation, that only starts with a reasonable suspicion.
Right, but even, even in the case of cyberbullying, there's a way to trace the original message back to the bully himself, or herself, without actually having to confiscate the phone.
Right.
Right, it's just my opinion, I think it's something that is probably better off being left out of this code of conduct, unless it would be worded that it would only pertain to a cellphones that are, I don't know, confiscated or turned off, I don't know how it could be worded. I would, I would think it'd probably be best just to leave it out completely.
It's not required, so, you know, that, that makes that easier for discussion. It was seen, you know, and again, this, this came from administration really feeling that this would be more clear in case that should happen and come up, you know, to really, just to be more transparent with people, you know, every kid gets the code of conduct, and parents are signing off, and here's something that might happen, that your cellphone is private property, and, and we checked, and legally, it can be searched with reasonable suspicion. In general, those things are left to the police, but, you know, again, it's not required, we haven't had it there in the past.
Well, who would be able to actually pick up the cellphone, turn it on, and go scrolling through it?
Well, again, it's a reasonable suspicion, it could be us or the police, depending on the case. We are allowed to search a backpack or a locker, and so are the police, with reasonable suspicion. And in this case, we have SROs at the Middleland High School, so we have police on campus who help us with things like that, if it, you know, if it's touching on criminal.
But don't you think that while searching a person's cellphone, you're also seeing things from, let's just call them innocent people, that may have interacted, that might be private?
Right, it's the same thing with a backpack, or, you know, it's private property, and we shouldn't be.
No, I understand that, but a person's backpack, let's assume that the items inside that backpack belong to the person who you're searching.
Right.
The cellphone, there may be messages from other people who aren't under suspicion.
Right.
Then you might see their private messages, that they've sent to, sure, they've been sent to the bad person, let's call them, but it's still private messages.
No, I understand that it's a, it's definitely not what we want to be doing, and, you know...
But if you don't want to be doing it, why would you put it in the code of conduct? That's, that's pretty much what I'm saying.
Well, I'll give an example.
For safety, there are times when we need to do an investigation, that's all I'm saying.
I think if you called the police and the police came, I understand that.
Right.
But the thing is, how would you, what could possibly happen that would make anybody, any administrator say, look at his cellphone?
I'm bomb threat.
I can give an example.
Just to name one.
What's that?
Bomb threat.
A bomb, but where would the bomb threat have come from?
I'm just, I'm saying there could be a threat to the entire population.
But the thing is, if somebody told you, if somebody told you that, let's call it Johnny made a bomb threat, and they can show you their phone that says, see, he put it all over Twitter, there's no reason for you to then go to Johnny's phone to look for that, because it's already been exposed. Meanwhile, you can call the police and have them come in and look for whatever else is going on.
The example of a bomb threat, while a good one, is really a law enforcement issue at that point, it's really not a school discipline issue, so.
Most of these do turn into a law enforcement, but, you know, I'll just be frank, we have a lot of young people doing things with cellphones that they shouldn't be doing. So, for example, we've had middle schoolers be the victim of having inappropriate pictures of themselves that maybe they gave to somebody for that person, and then that person widely shared those photographs.
No, I understand that, and I've heard stories, not of, not here, but of that happening, but my whole point is, in order to get that information, you can have it from, let's call it, the innocent person showing you that, rather than going to the person and getting his phone.
But I think when, once you involve the police, the police would definitely say, I need to search your phone, the accused person.
I wouldn't deny the police that right. I would deny the school district and anybody who works for it that right. I'm sorry, you're not the police, and I think anything like that, you would call the police, because it's bigger than the school district, stuff like that. I think any example that you've given me, I can't see where you...
Let me give an example that probably wouldn't rise to the level of police, but let's say cheating during an exam. If a, if a phone was used to, for texting, you know, if a student was sitting there taking a test and could text a friend a question and get a response back while he's sitting at a test.
But again, what would cause anybody to be that suspicious about it?
Perhaps the teacher seeing, seeing the phone out.
Okay.
Just all of a sudden, the, you know, sees, you know, that the phone disappears quickly.
And then the message says, Mom, from Mom, I love you, I mean, I mean, that's, it's just not...
It doesn't always say that.
That would be the point, is that if you look at the message, so you confiscate the phone at that point, you look at the message, in fact, it is to someone else, a message coming in with an answer to a question on the, on the exam. I mean, that, that's what I would see as being what you'd be looking for. So that, you know, that person texted out to Billy, hey Billy, what's, you know, what's, what's two times two? And then Billy sends back an answer, well, that's, that's, that's information that we should know, because Billy's not going to tell us that, oh yeah, I helped Joe cheat on that exam, but if the teacher sees some activity that creates a suspicion, bringing the phone out and looking at the text message on the phone would then provide evidence of, of the event. To me, that's where I would see it.
And I should say, the inclusion of the word cellphone was not in any way a proposal to change practice or to conduct deeper searches. This is not a common occurrence by any means, and that anything criminal, we are involving the police, and we are not wanting to conduct those kinds of searches. So it's not in any way a change of practice, it was really to say, you know, in the chance that your cellphone may get searched as part of an investigation, we want to tell the truth about that. That's all that was. You know what I'm saying? It's, it isn't that we're going to change and start doing that, it's that we can, and there may be circumstances where, in the best interest of, whether it's safety, security, or...
Fairness.
Fairness, the rules.
It's not, it's not so much that I'm here to try to protect the guilty, I just want to protect the innocent from this, and what could be an innocent message on there, and even, even the cheating thing, yeah, that would be, that would be a wrong thing to do, but it would also be wrong to take that student's cellphone and potentially see other things that were not meant for that person's eyes, it's just like an administrator or whatever, I just don't think that's right. There's just too many, and obviously, you wouldn't call the police for cheating, but it's just, I mean, I think you're headed into something that's just unfair, and not really proper.
Again, there has to be, there has to be a real suspicion that something serious enough is going on, and there's some cases where really inappropriate searches have happened, and we're all trained to avoid those things, that if you're talking about cigarettes on someone, you're gonna, and they're saying they don't have cigarettes, you're not going to do a strip search for a cigarette.
Right.
You know, we have to have, be reasonable, it's not worth it.
And I understand, no, locker searches, back...
Privacy is important.
Locker searches, backpack searches, I'm all for it, you know, if need big, but as far as picking up somebody's cellphone, smartphone, whatever, and scrolling through it just to see what's on it, you're, but, but that's the thing though...
Absolutely not allowed. That's absolutely not what we're talking about.
But in that case, but then how would you find what you're looking for?
Only if there was reason to believe that something very serious is happening, and that information isn't, we'd have to believe that that information is there. We don't just search a cellphone to find something, even on a kid with a serious record, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, and where would you go first on the small, what app would you go to first?
Only if you have information that leads you to believe that there's information only to be found in that cellphone, and, and the, and the situation is serious enough to really warrant doing that. That's the only time we're allowed to do that, or go in a backpack, or go in a car, or any of those things. You have to have real suspicion that something is serious enough, and that that information may be found there and nowhere else.
But, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to take up so much time with this.
No, it's okay.
But the, the thing is, it's like, again, if you have the suspicion, if somebody has a text message from somebody saying, I'm going to do XYZ, you already have it without going...
Then we don't need to. So in that case, and we've got tons of printouts from someone's Facebook page or Twitter, whatever, they give, apparently say, look, my kid's being bullied, here's the proof. We don't need to go into someone else's thing, and we don't. I mean, if the police investigate that, if their charge is filed, that's fine, but we have the proof right there, we don't need to go into this person's to then double-check, it's, it's, it's right there. So if we have what we need, of course not.
So if Joe tells you John is planning something really bad at the school, is that justification enough to take John's cellphone and go looking through it?
The cellphone wouldn't be the first thing to check, so we get those kinds of accusations all the time, and we don't just search everything. It really has to be specific to, there may be, you know, there's information we're told is in this cellphone, in this backpack, and that's the only place to get it. And again, if it's anything criminal, the police are dealing with that, and, and that they follow their own, you know, set of rules and what they're allowed to do and what is reasonable suspicion. So we're talking about, you know, if it's going to be building administration, it's going to be in cases that are not criminal, where we have real reasonable suspicion, and it's serious enough. So, you know, cigarettes not serious enough, that kind of thing.
All right, last question.
Yeah.
Whose idea was it to all of a sudden put it into this year's code of conduct?
So where I started was that in an administrative discussion about how to revise, improve the code of conduct, the e-cigarette came up as a choice, we decided to add that, and then it was, you know, in this list of private property, we should probably include cellphones. That was it. And I, I said, okay, these people are dealing with discipline every day, this is going to be helpful to be more transparent with parents, because there have been occasions when cellphones get searched, so, and in that case, I didn't even, you know, talk about how much of the time is it the police, and, and again, we're talking about very rare circumstances, and we have to be really clear, because we're subject, you know, we can't be searching without real just cause.
Thanks.
Okay, would anybody else like to address the board? By the way, thank you very much, it was interesting hearing your opinion, and that leaves me with a decision, depending on what the board wants to do, we have to change this quickly, because in order to get the code of conduct printed in time for next year, we have a short window, so...
This is first hearing, right? And then there's a second hearing with adoption next meeting?
Yes. Does anybody want to comment on whether or not you believe this should be in or not, at this time anyway, or you want to think about it?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I certainly agree with Perry's notion, of course, my easy answer there is, if you touch a cellphone during an examination, it's a zero, we don't even have to look at the phone, you know, that's it, you know, you shouldn't have had it out, you're told that, especially in a region scenario, you were told that umpteen times, and if you touch the phone during the exam, you know, it's a zero, and we don't even need to look at your phone, you know, unless, unless you're going to use it as the appeal to show us, see, I wasn't, you know, but it's the other aspects, you know, like you said, I, I get, I get a little uncomfortable, again, law enforcement's a different scenario, but I get a little uncomfortable with, you know, looking at, at a device like that, you know, because certainly there are things, in a lot of cases, I recognize discipline's not as simple as violence, there's, there's a whole lot of other things you're looking for, you know, or, or investigating and dealing with, but, you know, as an example, you know, searching a backpack, or, well, forget the locker, that belongs to us, I'm okay with going in there, even searching a private backpack, I'm okay with, because things can be concealed, you can bring things into the building that you're not allowed to have, you know, whether it's alcohol, drugs, you know, weapons, I mean, you name it, you know, a bomb, it could be stuffed in the backpack and brought into the building, so searching a backpack probably is an appropriate search. I can't think of anything that you can bring with you in your phone of that nature that would require us to be able to get our eyes on it, you know what I mean?
Well, actually, you could bring in an application that took down the internet, you could bring in an application that...
Yeah, but, again, once...
I'm just saying, as an example.
No, no, but once you get to those types of scenarios, that's law enforcement, they'll let law enforcement deal with it, get a warrant and do what they have to do, that, that's the difference, you know what I mean? This isn't about, hey, you're not supposed to have cigarettes, you're, you know, 16 years old, and, you know, give, give me those and take them away, and, you know, that's not what we're talking about, this, you know, it gets very, once you start deep diving into stuff, and, and with the exception of Perry's example, which is more academic, and I got the solution for that, you touch it during exam, it's a zero, and I don't want to hear about it.
What if, what if it's not clear that that's what they were touching?
Well, I mean...
That, that's the point, I mean, you see somebody, you know, shuffling their hands all of a sudden, are they, are they dealing with a cellphone or what they're doing?
I don't know what the procedure is anymore, we didn't have cellphones when I took region exams, but I'd like to think that they would all get put up in the front of the room and don't even get to possess them, that would probably be the easiest solution, but anyway. That's just, you know, I, I guess that's, I, I certainly don't want to, I don't know, I, I'm really, I'm really weary about this, that's all I'll say, I kind of offered my opinion, you know, so...
I'm inclined to agree with you, Kevin, and basically, I've seen a couple of articles, one on the internet, and I believe one in a paper recently, where they're anticipating over the next two years, there are going to be several, if not more, instances of rulings being made by higher-level courts as they go through this, basically because of the fact that the, the capability of storing information on the cellphone is so significantly higher than anything we've ever seen before.
It's a computer, yeah.
It is a computer, and, you know, when you're talking gigabytes of information, you can have anything in there, you know, and to be able to say, and the concern right now is to come up with some reasonable and workable guidelines for law enforcement, never mind school, your school districts as far as what you can do with that thing, they're concerned about, you know, something happening, and then they got to, they build a case on it, and then when it gets, when it gets to trial, the judge throws out all the information saying, you had no right to look there, you had no right to look in that information, you know. And then comes the lawsuits.
But the courts haven't judged on that yet, they haven't made a...
No, they're, they're, they're doing it in cases, and they're expecting appeals of those cases to be wandering, working their way through the appeals process to come up with some kind of definition, people trying to get ahead of the curve, and it's a slippery slope.
I understand, but we don't currently have the benefit of the guidance of the courts.
No.
We don't have a clear decision. In this case, we're talking about whether or not the school has the responsibility to search personal electronics.
Good word.
This doesn't see, it seems like there's an apt analogy by searching the student's backpack. I think that students have a certain expectation of privacy in terms of what's in their backpack, and yet we have the ability, given just cause, to look in the backpack, do we not?
Right, we do.
Okay, and, and yet, you can have items in the backpack that are very personal, and given the wrong situation would be very, very embarrassing for a school administrator to look through or see, and I think that that can, that analogy applies to personal electronics. Now, you can also store so much information on your personal electronics that that analogy falls apart. I'm perfectly willing to, to say that, but I think that, to a degree, once you start into the scenario where someone has the ability to search, then there's a certain amount of responsibility and training that goes along with it, they have to show restraint, and that goes for whether it's a school administrator or a police officer. So if they have suspicion of, of sexting, just to grab something out of the headlines, then it's, I think it would be possible... um, then it's, I think it would be possible that there would be just cause to search for evidence of that in their texting application. That doesn't mean that whoever's doing the search gets to go through all of the pictures on the, the, the device.
Um, it occurred to me that not only cellphones, but tablets, maybe Google Glass, I can't think of any other, I mean, we're talking electronic devices.
I think we actually switched to that term in the policy.
And then we switch that, yeah, I just, I just-
It does say electronic devices now.
So I'm not crazy about allowing someone to search through my cellphone, and I'm certainly not gonna volunteer it, but if there's just cause and somebody, a police officer, shows me a warrant, then I'm gonna have to let them. If somebody tells my son that they need to look in his backpack, then I don't think he's got a choice. When they talk about his cellphone, he'd better hand him the cellphone, and they ask him the password, he's allowed to say no. Uh, those are the rules of the engagement, and I think it's fair. I think it's the right balance.
And I'll say that, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just, I just, to, you know, be clear, you know, I mean, you, when they use the backpack analogy, like I said, you know, there's a lot of stuff you can haul into a building you shouldn't have, that could be dangerous to others, and a backpack that you can't with a phone. That's, that's the point. That's the point I was trying to make.
I, I would argue that you could put a lot of dangerous things in a phone, too.
Yeah, it's not over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you come back?
That's why we're here.
And about the analogy, I know, I agree, with the backpack, sure, there's a ton of personal things that could be in that backpack that would embarrass an administrator, but if, um, if a student has, let's, we'll say cellphone, has 50 contacts on his cellphone, that's 50 persons' private information that an administrator is now looking at.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Um, specifically in our training, and, and again, hoping that a building administrator will not have to do that kind of search, but they train us, because legally we can, that you're not allowed to go to the next screen without just cause. So you are not, I mean, we are trained not to, you know, you see something, that's it, or, you know, so we cannot go to somebody else's contact information and start digging around. So that, or, that's part of the training. We will not be protected. That's not our legal right, to go digging past levels. Um, and so specifically when, you know, in the legal training around searches and, and the part where we're talking about cellphones, that's what we're trained. So we can't use one person's phone to go digging around, and, and again, I don't know what the laws are for law enforcement, but for us, no.
So you're probably not gonna find anything in it?
Because, again, this isn't regular practice.
All right.
Yeah.
Are, are those limitations codified somewhere? So you can refer to it in the policy?
You know, during legal training, most of the time, what it's based on is their best advice to protect us, case law.
Would you-
Which-
Like that. Yeah, no, it's fine.
Would you consider adding the verbiage to the policy about saying that they don't have to give their password? Because I know if my child was approached and said, "Put your password," she's gonna put in her password for fear of being noncompliant. I'm sure there are other kids that are gonna be like, "No, I'm not giving you my password." But if they know that and it's in the Code of Conduct, then that could solve all of this.
And I'll find out, 'cause I heard that tonight for the first time about the password.
Now, the question then becomes, if they refuse to give the password, can the, can the cellphone be kept while a search warrant, if, if that's what's necessary to open it up?
And then, of course, the, with the police, it's a whole different thing. So this would only stop a search at the building level. So I'll find out.
If we read the, uh, the second paragraph in the policy itself, it says, "If the authorized school official was reason, has reasonable suspicion to believe that the search will result in, in evidence that the student violated the law," I think that's the key. Search will result in evidence, so it's, focus on one, one or two particular things rather than the, whatever else is in the cellphone or the electronic device. I, I, I'm wondering if, uh, it also mentioned, "Or district Code of Conduct," I'm wondering if we should eliminate "or district Code of Conduct" and just leave it as, uh, evidence of the student violating the law for these particular items. I mean, we should look into that, too.
So, and I, and I'm not looking at, but, so this is where electronic device is included with backpack? Or is this separate?
No, just specific to electronic devices.
Certainly, then that's fine, because that's not even required. The whole section is not required, so we could choose to just, you know, based on this conversation and the fact that it's meant to be more transparent and helpful to parents and actually raise more concern, um, you know, just based on the few parents that are here, then that certainly wasn't the intent. Um, so if just having it for criminal makes people, you know, feel a lot more comfortable because, then you know this is really significant. You need reasonable suspicion of criminal activity.
Well, I, can I just, can I, can I ask?
But it's covered, again, it's covered under, anyway.
Just, and I, and forgive me for sounding stupid, because I have to ask the question, but, so reasonable suspicion, and I recognize that the school administrators and teachers and staff are in loco parentis-
Correct.
You know, when, when mom and dad aren't around, but, like, so you, you have a reasonable expectation, or, I'm sorry, reasonable suspicion that there's, not, never mind this Code of Conduct, but a reasonable suspicion that there's a violation of a law. At, at that point, isn't it better just to get the police involved and let them deal with how to search it, not, rather than have us try to root around and look at the phone to determine that?
And that's definitely, that's definitely our practice.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, I guess that's what I'm saying, then why are we even talking about, why we have to search the phone?
I think it's more that if we know it's criminal, and we know something's going on, and we have a suspicion enough to start, and then we hit criminal, that's when we stop. But we don't always know that something is criminal when something just doesn't look right. So that's where it's our decision to go further, and then as soon as we find something really serious, then we do call the police or the S.R.
Okay, I guess I can say again, if we're gonna change this, we have to come up with a meeting, we have to change the words, then we have to, we have another public, um-
Yeah, I'm, yeah, and I'm, I'm trying to read all the guidance. I'm definitely gonna look into the password piece and whether, you know, if it is someone's right with their cellphone, even a minor in our, in loco parentis, to say, "I'm not giving you my password." So first I have to see that, and then to think about whether we want to have that in the Code of Conduct, which is basically saying how to protect your information, which is, again, people's right, we're just saying this is how you can protect your information against a search, and whether we wanna put that out there for all the kids to know that if you have something in your phone you don't want us to see or that potentially is illegal, here's how to protect people from finding out. And do we wanna tell them that? So, again, it's, it's, again, it's the kids who are doing no wrong deserve that protection, and then we might have a concern about safety for those who aren't.
So I'm recommending that we have a meeting, um, in the next two weeks before the next meeting, um, talk about the possible rewording. Thank you very much for bringing that up. And, um, at the next meeting, we will have a, a second public hearing on the Code of Conduct.
Doug, is, do you, do you think that there's enough interest in changing the wording to justify another meeting?
Well, I asked that the first time, nobody gave me an answer, so I said, "We're gonna have a, we'll have a meeting then."
I'll tell you flat out that I'm not interested in changing the wording. I think it's fine as is.
I would agree with that.
So do I.
I'm fine with whatever, I'll vote the way I'm gonna vote. There's no need to, you know, bash this around. I mean, if it's gonna pass, it's gonna pass, so let's not kill ourselves, you know, we don't need to, you know, it doesn't need to be unanimous. I haven't quite decided if I'm voting no on it yet either because of that. I just expressed my concern, so...
I mean, I, I do believe that there, you know, there's discretion, or there's, I mean, it sounds like there's training that's, that the, um, people who are administering this code have the training and, um, the, or the resources to apply it as I think we want it applied. It's not, it's not done, you know, as a wide spray. We don't just grab a phone, so we're searching for something. We have, we have probable cause, we're going in, we're looking for something, we're looking for something specific. We're not just saying, "You're a bad egg, we're gonna grab your phone and find something to hang you on." I mean, it's, I mean, I, I trust, and I, you know, from what I'm hearing, I think that we're doing it the way that it should be done.
I guess, I guess I'm just way in once, uh, I, I agree with Laurie that, that, um, perhaps adding that if your pass, if phone is password-protected, you're not obligated to give the password, and I think that's legal. That's legal, uh, but, um, you know, here's my cellphone, sure, turn it on, well, give me the password. No, well, it's my password, why am I giving it to you? You know, I think if that's, that's certainly protection, and, quite frankly, every single high school student certainly will have a password the next day on their phone, but...
They already do, they don't want their parents looking.
I'll just add, in terms of procedure, just a question, that if I can, you know, quickly get a sentence together that, that meets that requirement and it's posted, um, could at the next meeting it get discussed and adopted? It's just a question in terms of timeliness for handbooks, that's all.
It's a wait first consideration. I mean, because we've already talked about it here.
Yeah.
So if I have it up within a week and it's available for people, and then it's discussed again, but, but if there's no questions at that point? I'm just thinking about handbooks for high school and middle school.
I would send it to all of us first, and then, before you put it up in the next week, in case anybody has, uh, either a suggestion or an objection.
Great.
Okay, this was useful. Thank you again. Before we go on, because we have a unique situation-
Oh, we have to close, close public- I'm going to close the public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. Uh, do I have a second?
Glenn did.
Glenn, second.
Yep. Okay, all of them in favor? All right, okay. Before we go into the superintendent's report, um, because we have a, uh, special condition in the election this year for candidates, I don't think, I think it's been at least 15 years that I can remember or more before we had not enough people running. So, um, these are, they're kind of the rules.
Excuse me, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yep.
I tend to be really kind of strict about this stuff. I really think board members shouldn't talk about this, especially when one of them's the candidate, so I would prefer if the district clerk, since she runs the election, goes through this.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, rather than have it-
I was just helping him.
I know. I think, I just, I like, I always like to, always like to convey to people that we do not, we do not interfere with that election, electoral process, so...
That's fine. Welcome to the bottom, Debbie.
Thanks.
Okay, so what Mr. Heder was about, to speak about is that we have two, um, seats that will be available to, for board members to be elected on May 20th, and we have one candidate seeking reelection. So what happens when there are more seats available than there are candidates? The person receiving the highest number of votes, including write-in votes, assumes the first seat. Um, a write-in vote can be done by either absentee ballot or at the voting machine, and there will be instructions taped to the side of every voting machine that will look similar to this, um, and pencils will be attached to the machine. And how that will work is if you choose to write in a candidate or two candidate names, um, there's a slot that you would, a lever that you would lift, and you would write the name in that spot. So the vacant seats will, will be filled by the persons receiving the highest number of votes, if, um, the second seat would be filled by the, the next highest number of votes. So if a, a write-in candidate should refuse to serve, if they do receive the highest number of votes and they refuse to serve on the board, and there are additional write-in votes, then the next highest, um, vote getter would receive the seat. Now, if there should be a tie with the number of votes, and there is only one seat remaining and that, but the seat that's remaining is the one that receives the ties, the district has to have a runoff election within 45 days. And then the only candidates that are allowed to be included in this runoff election are the two names that have tied. There will be no new petitions accepted for that.
Uh, Debbie, um, since we, I just seeing this now, there are two questions that come to my mind. One, when you write in a name, you may put in, you know, Joe Blow, but if there are three Joe Blows living within a district that would be eligible, how do you determine which one was intended for? But more importantly, what is the timeframe that you have available to designate the winner? Something that probably can't be done that night if people have a right of refusal, because they may not be there.
No, no, because the person, i- if someone does receive a write-in vote, then I would have to notify them, um, immediately the next day, and that person would have, um, to accept the, the seat and actually file an oath of office. And if there are more than one, um, we do have like juniors and seniors, um, it's, it's very important that people write in the full name. Um, there are no initials accepted, and if there's more than one person in the, in the county that has the same name, we've not run into that, um, and I can think of, pardon me? Yeah, I, I would have to check into that further.
I hate, I hate to say what prompted, that popped it into my head, it's a commercial that's going around on television right now, "My name is Ronald McDonald."
Oh, right. And there's also one other scenario, if there were no write-in votes and one open seat remained, then the board would have the opportunity to appoint a qualified person by a majority vote.
And actually, that would not occur until after July 1st, though, because the vacancy wouldn't exist until then.
Correct.
How is it handled in the event that someone writes in a name and it's misspelled?
If you can ascertain what the voter is trying, who the voter is trying to nominate, um, then you would just allow that write-in vote.
All right, so, for example, if someone was trying to vote for Stephen Moore, and they spelled Moore, M-O-O-R, or M-O-O-R-E, or M-O-R-E, or M-A-L-
Right.
Then any of them would be acceptable?
Correct.
Based on whose judgment?
Mine.
This is gonna be a very difficult day.
Most people aren't gonna know how to spell Mittermeyer. Just-
I'm not gonna be happy if they write me in.
He's spent two hours trying to figure out how he was gonna spell Stephen. P-H or practice?
Okay, at this time, we will have the superintendent's report.
Um, pride first.
Oh, pride first, I'm sorry.
It's at the bottom of the page, that's okay. Um, I'm not going to do a full athletic update, uh, but we'll prepare one for the next board meeting. Yeah, it's-
Next on this closed public hearing, then pride, then, then superintendent.
Right, so I'm gonna do pride now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but just in a nutshell, so many of our teams are doing really, really well. As of last night, our boys' track team is undefeated. I believe our soft girls' softball team is, uh, also, uh, high up there, the boys' tennis, uh, multiple teams are doing extraordinarily well. Um, I do wanna say, uh, that the Oval Office Invitational on Saturday was spectacular. I see a lot of our, uh, parents and community members in the audience who were helping, so thank you so much. Uh, it was really a community effort. We hosted, uh, 12 school districts, and, uh, we received, uh, an incredible amount of compliments, not only on our facilities, but on how well managed the, uh, first Invitational was. So congratulations on the inaugural Ovis, Oval Office Invitational. We also had the District Arts Festival on Sunday, and that was spectacular. Um, it's an event that we have every year and really highlights the, uh, incredible work of our students from K through 12, so hopefully everybody in the community had an opportunity to come out and see that. We have two other points of pride, and one is an art contest that I'll let Aviva explain.
Okay, um, this is actually a Havlin Middle School student, um, Patrice Cranston. She did a poster for No Name Calling Week, and she did an awesome job. We should congratulate her and wish her luck. And I'm gonna spell out the website, so you can check it out, and, and hopefully it'll be available in the minutes, so people can look. G-L-S-N, glisten.org slash article slash creative-expressions dash twenty-fourteen. But if you go to G-L-S-N dot org, I'm sure you can find it. Oh, it's on the Havlin homepage, even easier to find. So congratulations, Patrice Cranston.
I love when life becomes easy.
Easy and complicated, the whole electronic debate. And the last item I have is a letter I received from Rochester Institute of Technology. And we've received similar ones from other universities, but I'll read this. This is in honor of our high school world language teacher, Gina Calenti. It says, Dear Mrs. Rycheck, each year, the Rochester Institute of Technology honors its outstanding undergraduate scholars. This is a select group of students who have completed at least eighty-three credit hours of study and have established a cumulative grade point average of at least three-point-eight-five for all work completed at the university as of the previous spring term. Only one percent of RIT students receive this recognition in any given year. So this is celebrating two things, a teacher and the student we sent to RIT. We asked our outstanding undergraduate scholars each to identify a high school or community college teacher they considered to be the best. A teacher they would honor as a role model and who had profound influence on them as they planned for their future. Kayla Cole, a graduate of your school, nominated Gina Calenti. A certificate of recognition was given to Ms. Calenti. RIT has chosen to recognize these teachers to emphasize the continuity of teaching, not just in the conveyance of knowledge, but in the inspiration of students as well. We congratulate Ms. Calenti and we congratulate your school's contribution to the advancement of our society. We cannot progress, advance, or compete without an effective system of learning. So congratulations to Ms. Calenti and congratulations to Kayla Cole. That's quite an accomplishment at RIT. So on both fronts, we're proud of both.
Okay, I'd just like to add that the concert season, in addition to the art, Monday was Violet Avenue, right here. It was a great night. I was here. And I thought the fourth grade chorus was really strong. Not that everybody else wasn't good, but I just thought the fourth. Tuesday night was the middle school. I thought the band was especially lively. I loved the way it was conducted. I thought the choice of the music was really, really good. So hopefully, that continued, which I'm sure it is, because the music teachers here are just phenomenal. And last night at FDR, there was another concert that was also very interesting in the choice of music. I like the choral arrangements as well as the choice of music for the orchestra. I thought it was not just your ordinary orchestra music. It was something else different, so I thought that was good. So anyway, there's two more next week, so if you people out there would like to see some really fine musicians and singers, North Park has theirs next Monday or Tuesday, and Netherwood has it the following day, so.
And the Price is Right, too.
And the Price is Right, that's true. Anybody else have any?
Yeah, just can I, and this is sort of related, well, it is pride. You know, I was at the track meet the other day, but I wanted to talk real quick to the board about something before I forget. Because it's, everyone's noticed that the, we keep calling the field the Oval Office, which I just think is so cool. I just think, I think it was Brian Holling came up with that idea. That's what I'm hearing, anyway. That's the rumor. That, you know, the stadium has become the Oval Office, home of the presidents. I would, I think we should take a serious look. We don't have to do it tonight, but I would like to consider passing a resolution officially naming it that. You know, the board has the responsibility for naming school buildings and other facilities. And, you know, I think it's really cool that they came up with the name. I think it's a great name, but I also don't want it getting lost because it was never officially designated. You know, that'll just kind of fall apart and not really kind of, so it's just something to think about. But I would like to suggest that we consider passing a resolution officially naming the facility that.
I think that would be fine, as long as we give other people an opportunity to come up with other names, just so.
Yeah, but I think that was the best one.
Mine, too.
Just saying.
That's it then.
We had so many kids from other schools. They just thought it was so cool. They all put it together. You know, like, and they were coming from the other schools and they're like, wow, the president's the Oval Office. They just, they put it together in their heads and they thought it was the coolest thing. And it's a lot of pride up there last Saturday, so.
The T-shirts were great. I meant to bring one in. The T-shirts were, had the Oval Office. It was really impressive.
Because of course, in the shape of the trap, I mean, the whole thing, it's just, it's the coolest name. It really is. So it's a gimme.
Anybody else?
It's not pride, but just a comment since they, somebody chimed in with something, wanted to pass on to the board. But I have something for the administration. I read online this past, yesterday or the day before, that the governor has come up with a new rewards program, which basically offers free tuition, free tuition, full tuition for four years to either the city school or the SUNY state schools for engineering students, for the STEM program, any student in any school district who is in the top ten percent of their school, who chooses to attend a qualified city school or state SUNY school in engineering, science, math, or technology, would be granted full scholarships for the four years, with the single stipulation that they must agree to stay in the state and for a qualified company for five years after graduation. I think that's an amazing, an amazing offer based on the cost of, I don't even, I can go back. My students, my sons, I had three graduate from Villanova School of Engineering in two thousand and two. And if I worked for the next forty years, I couldn't earn the money that that tuition costs, so. It's something to be looked into, and I hope that we can pass this on to the student councils up at the high school to investigate and get the information on this program. As I understood it, it's supposed to go into effect next year, the fourteen-fifteenth school year, which doesn't leave much of a window, and I don't know what kind of documentation you need to present. But the first thing that came to mind is we have a great number of students that attend Duchess Community College. You get the pre-engineering or pre-science programs out of the way. And Duchess has a major links to several of the great universities in the state to advance the students there with the hope for scholarship or financial assistance. So this is a much wider program and a great program for students that, in this current day and age and money situations, could provide a great leg up for them.
Absolutely.
Okay, move on. Do you have an additional report for the superintendent?
I just have a few things that don't come under pride. We are hosting the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast as we do each year. We'll be doing that next week. And that's an opportunity for us to, again, highlight some of the great things that are going on in our school district. And it's also where I give a budget presentation. Just a reminder that I will be going out to the Clinton Town Hall, and Wayne Curlander will be joining me, and I believe Doug Heider, on the fourteenth at six-thirty to give a budget presentation there. The other thing I wanted to announce is that there are a large number of people in the district that are going to get an email about a focus group participation. And one of the things that came up in our parent survey was the use of our school facilities and basically a sense that people didn't know how to use them or didn't know how to access them or what you could possibly use them for. So K-12 Insight is going to host a forum. And what we've done is we've sent emails to everybody from, you know, presidents of organizations, PTAs, historical society, the town board, the Chamber of Commerce, the booster clubs, the, anybody we could find that had a wide email reach, we sent that and we will, we sent the invitation for them to pass on. We will also be posting the invitation on our website. There will be three focus groups on May twenty-eighth. All the information will be posted on the website. You do need to sign up. Participation is limited. And they are running three sessions so that we can get more participation. The following night is the district leadership team. We'll receive an overview of results. We'll get the full analysis of results a couple of weeks after that. But just an FYI, that there will be an invitation to participate in a focus group if people are interested. And the topic is community use of our facilities.
Okay, we will now have a presentation by Deanna Gonzalez, the principal here at Violet Avenue.
If we want to use the projector, it's not on yet. Can you set it up? So we just have to, would you mind, Wayne?
Oh, and so while we're setting that up, we'll just comment on a few things while Deanna's getting ready. First and foremost, thank you so much Violet Avenue staff for being here tonight. This is always the greatest turnout of staff that we see when we visit the schools. And we really think it's a testament to how you operate in this school as a true school community, a real testament to your dedication. So thank you for being here. And thank you for the wonderful food. And I believe that's a collaborative effort between the, between the staff and parents, and the treats that we receive when we are here are incredible. I'd also like to give a shout out to something new, and I'm sure Deanna, but I did have the opportunity to stop by on nineteen thirties night. And I know many of the staff, especially Lorraine in the back, were part of that. And that was an inaugural event as well, and hopefully it will continue. And I don't know, Steve, if you have the opportunity to pan the room, but there's student work all over the wall. So thank you, Deanna, for hosting.
Just the way we like it, student work all over. Yes, thank you so much, and welcome to Violet Avenue. It's nice to have everyone back here. I enjoy having you here and sharing all of their student work and all of the work the staff has put in. And the nineteen thirties night was great, but I won't skip ahead in the presentation. So my first slide is about our pride, things we've been working on this year since the last time you were here. We have been working very closely with Maris, Duchess Community College, and SUNY New Paltz. We have numerous Maris volunteers. I think I've lost count. I would venture to say, or guess to say, probably over fifty Duchess Community College volun, or sorry, Maris College volunteers that come in on a weekly basis and volunteer in our schools to work with our students, work in classrooms, in the cafeteria, at recess. We've worked really closely with Maris Reading Three program again this year. We've had numerous volunteer, Reading Three teachers. We worked closely with Ralph R. Smith to, not only this year did they come in and work with our teachers, but also my, the teachers and administration and the staff at Maris to provide professional development for them in the building. So they were coming in early. They've attended our PD sessions and our study groups. We've did some really nice work with them and gave them a lot more exposure to children into classrooms. So it's been a very nice partnership. Mrs. Lawson and myself, just this week, were able to attend a professional discussion at Maris where we got to meet with groups of students that are about to graduate and engage in a professional debate conversation with them, which was really a great evening and a good learning opportunity for myself to hear what's going on around the county and what student teachers are experiencing, and also for them to hear what we're doing and what we're working on and our challenges and successes in the building. In addition to that, we have had professional development in the building that's been led by staff as well as myself, study groups. Three of our teachers led a math study group the entire year, four teachers, and it's been really helpful and supportive. We've also done work with Teachers College, a great love of mine, as you know, and our writing units of study and working on that and implementing it this year. I was struck, I made an announcement today, that teachers, if anyone wanted to bring anything down to contribute to share, that I'd love to hang everything up in the gym today. And I was struck by just how much student writing is hanging up around the room. And I didn't ask for student writing, I promise. It just so happened to be that that's what a lot of the stuff that came down happened to be. So please, take a look at that because I'm very proud of the work that the kids have been doing in the area of writing. We also hosted, as Mr. Heider knows, our Walk to School event this year. In October, it was a culmination activity for the sidewalk that is now our emergency regress from the playground all the way down to the children's home, which is where we would walk to if we had an emergency. It's our evacuation site that's off-site, off of campus. So we started down at the children's home and with our balloons and our T-shirts, and Dr. Fisher was there, and we all walked up, and some of our local politicians as well. That was definitely a collaboration with the Town of Poughkeepsie Police and the Fairview Fire Department and local politicians to make that day possible. So it was a really nice event and really enjoyable, actually, to walk in and then come in in the morning and have that activity together with the kids before the start of the school day. Academic data, as you know, and as you've heard, there were some changes to not only the standards we've been working on, but the state assessments. So there are two sets of data on this slide. One of them, the first, represents threes and fours only. We've been recently told by the state that we could or should consider twos, threes, and fours proficient, that they probably would have been proficient had the change not occurred. So the first set of numbers that you see for ELA and math there would be just, account for just threes and fours. And the second number would have been if we had accounted for our twos, threes, and fours. So before the change, we would have been very similar data-wise as we were the year prior. And of course, with the changes, we have significant work to do, as the rest of the state does as well. Our science scores, the test was not changed in a similar fashion to ELA and math. So those remain ninety-seven percent proficient threes and fours and a hundred percent proficient two through four.
Too tempting to comment at this point, but I won't.
You can, if you want.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just as amazing to see that, you know, you can be ninety-seven percent proficient in science, which is all reading and thinking and problem solving, but, you know, that just shows you how drastically the tests have changed in reading and math.
They have changed drastically, and it's definitely not a reflection of the work that's going on. And if you've been lucky enough to be here in the classrooms and see the work the teachers are doing and the kids are doing and the thinking that they're doing, it is not reflective of the work that they're doing right now. We have a long way to go and we want high standards for kids. But there is amazing work going on in our classrooms that I and many of you are very proud of. So. Our building leadership team goal for this year was to make Common Core more accessible to parents. So last year, we, for the first time, had a Common Core evening for parents, where we invited parents in to meet in grade level groups with teachers to talk about the changes that Common Core has brought and shifts in instructional practices that parents may hear about when kids come home. That was a really successful evening. We had a tremendous amount of parents and kids that attended that evening. We watched the kids so the parents could come. And so we decided to do it again this year, except we layered in one extra piece. The first piece was we had parents come in. We had the same evening as we did last year. Again, the kids came, we held on to the kids, parents went upstairs, learned about what was going on in their current classroom. And then the following morning was an opportunity for parents to actually come into the building, go into their child's classroom, sit next to them, and do something that they had learned about the night before. So some of the things you've been hearing about, about close reading and math sprints and math talks and guided reading, read alouds, these were all things that parents got to sit next to their kids and actually see it in action. So it wasn't just hearing about it, but they got to see it and participate. On our parent survey, this was really well-received. Parents thought that they knew more about Common Core, knew more about how to support their kids. So I was really happy that we could continue to do that and kind of add a next step to it. Extra activities, I heard there might have been a bullet limit to this slide, and I think I went over. But we have a lot of activities, which is good, and they'll be quick. We had our harvest night again this year. That is an opportunity for kids to come in and participate in the fall and have fun and dance and do activities. And the PTA helped us to fund that. Winter workshops, we also continued. That's the day before we go on Christmas break. Kids get to participate all throughout the day in different stations, also funded by the PTA. Our Walk to School event, which you just heard about. Fairview Fire Department has come in again to do fire prevention for our kids. Nineteen thirties night, which was great, and Lorraine and Tommy Nominaker, our art teacher, helped to put a lot of that together. And you'll see some of the artifacts from that around the room, including Dorothy and Superman. And somehow referred to as the old man in the car, that's supposed And somehow referred to as the old man in the car, that's supposed to be FDR. So he's not just the old man in the car. It was great, and we had swing dancing and 1930's snacks. The artwork that you see in the lobby is Art Deco and inspired by the period and also the portraits, so please feel free to take a look at that when you leave the building, because some of their artwork is stunning, as always. We have District Pen Pals where our students here, Pen Pal with Netherwood, and we have our Food Bank donations, again, we're working with the Food Bank in Hyde Park. Our fifth-grade classes have been taking donations for that and going to the Food Bank to deliver and stock the shelves, so that community service continues again this year. UNICEF was also a collection that they made at Halloween when they did trick-or-treating. So UNICEF is there, and I think I forgot that. We had PARP, which is Parents as Reading Partners. Mrs. Billis was also very important, put all of that together. We had a growing garden theme this year on our website. If you didn't get an opportunity to see our beautiful pictures of how we turned the lobby into a garden for the kids when it was still very cold outside. I have to say, it was quite a treat to come in from freezing cold into the lobby and see the beautiful garden, grass included.
That was just yesterday.
It was, it did get really cold. Let's see, where did I leave off? Oh, we had our voice showcase where we had students who came up and sang and shared their voices with us. We have buddy reading with several of our classes, where we pair up older students and younger students to read together. There are pictures there that are included. And worked again with WRWD, came in to work with our fifth-grade students to do the pledge and broadcast it on a morning show. So lots of fun things going on. Our character education, we use the Second Step Program, which continues, and we use that in our classrooms, and our school social worker and psychologists use that in many of our classrooms. The Harlem Wizards came in to do an assembly here. I was a little surprised, I didn't anticipate that taking a character education turn, but I think Mr. Heider would agree, that he did a really beautiful job of incorporating that and the importance of school and staying in school and being a good person. It was, it was a nice presentation, it was a little unexpected. I didn't think that's where we were going, but it was nice and well-received by the kids. Our ongoing community service with the Food Bank and with UNICEF and activities that the kids are doing to support the community also helps us to build our character. And many of our classrooms have classroom-based, community-building, class meetings, responsive classroom, and do that on a daily, ongoing basis. Our parental and community involvement, I've already mentioned, Fairview Fire Department has been extremely helpful, from, you know, inspections, walking around, to fire safety, to bringing the fire trucks to block off the street for us so that we could all safely go on our Walk to School event. Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department has been wonderful. Detective Chris Hamel has come in to train the staff again on safety procedures. He has already done two lockdowns with me for practice, planning one more soon. He has come in, he comes in just to do walkthroughs and check on us, to do exit and entry, you know, security checks to make sure that we're all safe, and is just here to answer any question. We had, we called him the other day, we had a helicopter flying very low. Turns out, it was just Central Hudson checking lines. So, you know, down to the simplest little question, they've been extremely responsive and helpful to us. Again, with the food pantry in Hyde Park with UNICEF, we have several volunteer readers, including Mr. Heider, who is here every week and works with our classes. We also have other volunteers that come in to read. We have grandparent volunteers that come in and volunteer in our classrooms. The IBM STEM Engineering Day coming in and working with our classes, and Central Hudson is coming in to give presentations to the classes as well. And that's it for me sharing all the things that are going on in Violet Avenue. If you'd help me to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Does it mean I have no good questions for you this year?
I do, but I can't ask in as much detail as I want.
Okay.
The bottom line is that because of the changes in the testing, you're not able to compare academic performance this year to past years.
That is correct.
It's always frustrating when
It is.
there's, there's no way to look at a trend.
Yeah, and it, for me, it's frustrating because I can't highlight all of the hard work that the teachers sitting behind me and those even that can't attend, all of the hard work that they're doing.
Exactly.
And the amount of impact that they have on those kids every day. And to not be able to show them in concrete numbers, I know they know, and I try to tell them how great they are, but you can't see a concrete, and us all being driven educators and gone into this for a reason, like the A on the report card, you know, that's what we're all aiming for, and it's hard when you don't have that gratification, you know how excited I was when I did. So, yeah, it's just a matter of time, it'll get there.
Yeah. How, how is the, the use of data walls going? Is it, are you still using
We are.
that as an analysis tool?
Yes, we are. I just shared it at an all-admin meeting, actually. We recently updated those with the most recent FNP data that we have. There's since been another set, we've just completed another set, but just updated those. And I think you know that we've also been giving NWBA or MAPS assessments, and so we compared the two data points and then other data points, things we know about kids as far as ESL status or if they're receiving special services in class, so that we could try to notice any trends or patterns in their data.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, and one surprising thing that we saw, the longer I have them, the better they get. So, you know, the longer, and the longer I can keep them, the longer we have them and we can teach them, the higher their data gets and the more they are at or above proficiency.
Yeah, but Eric gets the fifth graders next, Deanna.
I know. This has been a very fun and entertaining group that is graduating this year and in two large classes, but dear to our hearts in so many ways. Dear to our hearts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for having me, and please take a look at the work, we're really proud of it. Thank you.
At this time, can I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, pose. We are now in public participation. Anybody who would wish to address the board, if you would come forward and... All right, you can, if you want. Yeah, go ahead, that's what it's for.
Hi, my name is Tom Malloy. Just as ridiculous as this might sound regarding the code of conduct, the reason I think ultimately that it should be, if not reworded, left out completely, is that while I have the utmost respect for all the administrators in this district, I would hate to see the district itself, anything bad come onto the district for an overzealous administrator who, in the heat of the moment, might take a search too far. I mean, we've, I, we've had trouble in the past with a situation where we're an administrator who's got a little carried away, let's say, but, um, plus even that, we don't even know who, who we're leaving this code of conduct to as the high school principal. And just, as ridiculous as this all sounds, I think it's, it's just another point that I just wanted to make, because I really do think that, if not reworded, it should really be left out completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Heider, I'd like to respond.
I beg your pardon?
I'd like to respond to the public comments.
Oh, yes, sorry.
In the case of an overzealous administrator, I don't think the absence or presence of language in the policy is going to change anything. I think they're going to do what they're going to do. I think that what we need to do is trust in the training and the quality of the personnel in the, in the school system. I think that's what it boils down to. You know, after the fact, there may be ramifications, but I, I think that the current language gives the, gives us the administration leeway to do what needs to be done, and we have to hope that the quality of the personnel and their training leads them to do the right thing at the right time.
Any other comments? Okay. For board discussion, 9.1 Exit Poll Survey at District Vote, something we did last year for the first time. In your packet, there is a, the survey from last year that Glenn and Harry and I worked on, and I still, I, I just read it over, and I thought, those are the kind of things we want to know. I don't know if there's anything that anybody wanted to add or change.
So Doug, first.
Especially Gary, who wasn't here last year, so...
I wanted to say that I still think that you guys did a great job. The one thing that I picked up when I was analyzing the data after we took the poll was that there's some ambiguity in question number 10. So it lists grades K through three, four through eight, nine through 12, and past high school age, which is good as far as it goes, but then gives them the option of saying elementary school, high school. And so I would like to see the, the elementary school and high school boxes eliminated. And I would like to see, you know, if we want the granularity in, in elementary school so that we can divide between the upper and the lower grades, then it should be K through two and three through five, and then grades five, six through eight. That way, you could get all of the same information much more clearly. The other thought that I had, and we can kick this around, I'm not married to the idea, is that a lot of the comments, I saw a lot of the write-in comments, seemed to object to the idea that they were being asked to fill out an exit poll. And so I don't think it would hurt us to consider a brief statement at the top talking about how this is a voluntary poll intended for the purposes of better understanding the wishes of the community. That may or may not
Well, as I recall, last year, you know, in my old brain, it takes me long to remember stuff, but we had people at that table telling people that they could, if they wished to do that. So it wasn't, not only was it not mandatory, but it didn't even appear to be mandatory because there were people saying that it wasn't. That's the way I remember it, but...
So, I agree with you, but reading through the comments that were stated in the poll, people seemed to resent the fact that they were offered the opportunity to express their opinion.
They were so, they were so mad about it, they answered the poll anyway.
Yeah, so in that case, maybe it's pointless to, to make an additional statement about volunteer, voluntary and value.
Well, I think it might be helpful, Steve, to have a little blurb on what the purpose of an exit poll, because I heard that as well, people, even though people, the people that wanted to take the exit poll survey, they were saying, why did you ask me how I voted? I just voted. And so they didn't understand that by doing the exit poll, we could find out a greater level of detail about how our voters are voting. So I think it might be worthwhile to maybe just have a little bookmark of what is the purpose of an exit poll, so, so they understand it. I, I think a lot of our voters had never encountered an exit poll, and they were very taken aback with, why would you ask me how I voted? And just explaining that now we can't legally go into the voter information and extract that and attach it, but we can at least find out now that, you know, which town they lived in, what age bracket and associated with how they voted, that their permission for allowing us to look at it that way is the only way we can look at it that way. So I think we can put together a little bookmark explanation to have at the polls there. But it is an interesting phenomenon that they complained about taking an exit poll, but they volunteered. Nobody was twisting arms, so, but it's interesting.
All right, anybody else have any other suggestions?
Yeah, I do. I, I think this might be a good opportunity to get a feel from the community of how they feel about this veterans exemption that most likely will come up next year to us again. Just get the community feel about, uh,
Okay.
how they like it, and I don't know how we could word it, but I don't know how the fellow board members feel about it.
My biggest question is whether or not the public knows and understands enough to be able to offer an opinion. I mean, and maybe that's one of the first questions, is do, you know, do you feel that you're informed about it?
What I'm saying is this might be the only opportunity we could get a little feel in the community about this.
I understand, and I think it'd be great to get feedback, but it'd be good to get feedback that you understood, you know, somebody may be in favor of it or against it, but not actually have
Yeah, I think we'd have to add some kind of detail in there.
That seems like a, that seems like a, an issue that would best be served by an additional sheet of paper with a brief description of the issue and then a question or two about what their opinion is.
Sure.
And that would serve us in two ways. The first is we get their opinion, and second is they become more informed. Because right now, I think it's flying under the radar.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's an excellent idea. We worked very hard to make this a one-page survey so that people wouldn't be saying, oh my God, page after page after page of questions. So I like that idea. Everybody agree that we'll have a second?
Yeah, I think a, a fact sheet with just a few questions at the end.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and maybe, maybe it's stapled where it's a second sheet.
It's got to be very brief, or they're going to just toss it and say, I gotta get to work, boom.
Bullet points, six bullets maximum, six words per bullet.
You knew it was going to come up before the end of the night.
Yeah. Gere just pointed out it's going to have to be kind of a neutral. The information is fine, I don't want it to appear to be a referendum.
Oh, I think it's just factual. I think that you, you have to provide it as a, as a very clear factual.
Correct, but if we've showed data that ninety percent of the people who responded, and maybe that was ten, wanted us to do a certain thing, and we didn't, then we're not, we're not listening to the community. You know, I'm just saying that there's a reason why we didn't put it on the, the budget vote as a referendum, because we didn't want to set a precedent.
We could, we could gather information about, you know, people's interest in receiving information, attending informational sessions or newsletters or... I think there are ways to phrase a question about, you know, participation as a community in the veterans tax credit. But I think we should look at that carefully, and we have time.
Okay. We doing it again? Harry, am I, um...
Yeah, yeah, I'm...
We'll look at, we'll look at this and, and the veteran thing?
Sure.
Okay.
The other suggestion that I had was in regards to question six. When I was analyzing the data, you know, there's eight, eleven sources of information there, and several, several of them were down in the single percentage points. I would like us to review the data from last year or simply look at this and try to find some that can be combined. So for example, could we combine district newsletter and brochure together into a single bullet? bullet?
Like all the district ones in one?
Well, not necessarily all district, because we do want some granularity.
Really high, yeah.
But, you know, certainly the newsletter and the brochure could be lumped together as, you know, district hard copy, or, you know, the correct verbiage there.
Okay.
And, and actually.
And word of mouth seems like it could be eliminated, because we've already covered discussions with friends and family or district employees, who does that leave?
Enemies.
Enemies.
And we don't actually share budget information on school messenger, we just simply announce, you know, today's the date to vote, so I, I would take that one off as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Is it, let me just one more comment to it. Does it make sense, just a thought, does it make sense, you know, we ask about children in the district, and yet we've got this, you get this whole age spread up into, you know, into the senior years, does it make sense to ask about grandchildren?
We could modify question 10 as children or grandchildren?
Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, my parents live in the district, they've got one grandchild left, so, I mean, just a thought. I mean, it kinda, you know, is that, you know, I mean, 'cause, you know, you might be more interested in seeing what the yes/no split is on with, with, you know, older voters knowing that piece of information.
Right.
Absolutely.
So not combined it, but grandchildren, children.
Right, just a thought.
I think it's a good idea.
Appears the generation gap again.
Yeah.
It does draw the.
I mean, my parents have always been supporters of the school district. My father was a public school teacher in Red Hook, but I mean, that, you know, the notion was, you know, there was a, there was a gap where it was like, well, we have more kids in the districts, and, not that they didn't care, but, you know, but now all of a sudden, that, once the grandchildren showed up in the district, suddenly they were well-engaged again in school activities and paying attention to what's going on, and I just, and I go to enough events, you know, that they're at, and I see a lot of their contemporaries with them. You know, there's a lot of grandparents that are pretty well-engaged in what's going on in the schools, so.
Not to spend time wordsmithing this, but would we wanna make it a little more general in, in a phrase like direct family or immediate family? That covers aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters? Just a thought, I don't care.
Yeah, whatever. I just, whatever helps you mine the data, I guess, and look at it, you know, whatever you think. I just, I didn't wanna cut it off at just parents and not parents, 'cause I, I, there are, there's a whole lot of grandparents in this school district.
I think at the very least, we should change.
I don't, I don't mean to assume that I know how they vote, but that would be interesting to know, actually.
Okay, well, I think Doug and Perry are gonna meet on this topic.
I beg your pardon?
It's my understanding that Doug and Perry are gonna discuss this in a committee meeting?
Along with the notes that you send us.
Okay.
Yeah, send your, send your notes, it'd be helpful.
Okay.
And threats.
Okay. That was very useful.
I wrote my threats down.
And, let me move down here. May I have a motion for 10.1 on the revised 2014-15 calendar? Hopefully everybody's had a chance to review it.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, but changed.
Okay. We actually learned that the day that we had originally scheduled for Rosh Hashanah was not the standard practice, so we modified the calendar in September so that we are celebrating or closed on the proper day for Rosh Hashanah. So I think it was the 25th. We had, yeah, we had, we originally had school closed for the 26th on Friday, and then later learned that it was really Thursday is the standard practice, and now we are in line with the other, with the county calendar, as well as the, the sources that help us keep these things in check are, definitely helped us out with this.
That's good, that's fine, yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think.
I had a question.
You have a question?
Just 'cause I wanted to understand it. Again, I had no objection to the transaction or the person, I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah. So a couple of things, I think I know your question.
Yeah, we'll wait for that, 'cause we gotta also congratulate our new principal, so we'll, we can take care of the fun stuff first.
Okay, so the fun stuff first. Well, fun sad stuff. So first, Sue Hawkins is with us this evening, and we are just first and foremost, thank you so much for your years of service. You've been a phenomenal asset to the district and to Violet Avenue, and we're very sad to see you go. And that's as of September, so we still have you for a few more months, but we wish to congratulate you.
I'd just like to say one thing, that the students have way too much fun in this room.
The other significant item on the agenda is the permanent, if you will, placement of Eric Shaw at the middle school. He did take a year leave from his assistant principal position as really a safety net precautionary, and I don't wanna speak for him, but there are certainly no hesitations, no regrets. He is Haviland Middle School and is doing a phenomenal job, so we welcome him to the official principal position at Haviland Middle School. You did a fantastic job this year, and so. And that trickle-down effect permits Dan Cowan to now officially begin his tenure as the assistant principal at FDR High School. And again, you know, we're very proud of the work that he's done at, at FDR, so all the way around, really great leadership moving up through the ranks in the district, and we're, we're very pleased that this is on the agenda tonight, and that you're at Haviland and Dan's at FDR, and so, congratulations.
Okay, Kevin?
Okay, so I had a, just a quick question, 'cause I was just trying to understand the transaction a little bit here.
Yes, it's a tricky one.
Yeah, so that, do you want me to describe it for the public, I guess, or?
Well, you can read it if you want.
Yeah, well, so, so we have a, a teacher's, a teaching assistant at the high school near the, at the end, taking a leave of absence, so she could fulfill a leave replacement for a teacher up there, which I'm not opposed to, I think that's great, she knows the building and, and all that. But I just didn't, I didn't, I didn't see a corresponding transaction appointing her to the leave replacement position, so what's the, there must be a story there.
What's the deal, yeah. And Colleen Gilbert, the teaching assistant who's taking the unpaid leave, is math certified. So because the regulations permit Kara Kessler, the teacher who is going out on family leave, to not definitively say when she's coming back, we can't put somebody in there on a permanent basis because we don't know how long they're gonna be there, that, that's part of it.
Okay.
The second part of it is that because it's not, because of that open-endedness, Colleen will substitute at the substitute's rate of pay for the first 30 days, and when she hits that 30-day mark, then she goes on step one of the teacher's salary.
Oh, okay.
So it does read, it sounds unusual and a little bit fishy, somebody taking an unpaid leave of absence and then not being appointed, but she was previously appointed as a substitute for the district.
That I did see, that I did see.
That, okay, so she will be substituting for the Kara Kessler position until Kara comes back.
Okay, now, here's the tricky question.
Oh, boy.
And I recognize that, really, I realize her employment continues, and again, so, so, but from a technical point of view, so she goes on unpaid leave of absence, I assume as a teaching assistant, she must have benefits from us. I'm guessing, I mean, could have, or maybe she doesn't, that might be up to her, but I'm just guessing that could be eligible for them if she had them.
Right, right.
Well, how, how do you continue receiving benefits if you're on unpaid leave of absence, even though you're technically still in the employ of the district? But you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's why I'm a little confused.
I'm pretty sure they met with, well, I'm not pretty su, I'm, I know they met with both of them, I don't know if she has benefits from a spouse, but I, I know that we would not, Cora's not here, so I can't turn on Cora.
No, I know, I just, yeah.
But I know that we wouldn't put somebody's medical benefits in jeopardy, I can definitively find out how, but I know we would never put somebody in jeopardy of losing their benefits.
Okay, that's, 'cause like I said, it's, I just found it unusual that she was, you know, really, she's a paid deal, a paid regular employee, takes a leave of absence that essentially becomes per diem to fill this role, and that just had me a little, little confused, so.
I'll double-check on her benefits, but we would never arrange it so that somebody was without them.
That's all I wanted to make sure of, I mean, like I said, I had no objection to her or, or the, the transaction, other than usually you see on other side, somebody, as, as an example, you know, Eric finally vacates the assistant principal at the high school now that he's been appointed principal, you know, that one always kinda goes with the other, so, that's all I wanted, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, enjoy your retirement, it's great. May, where are we, we're at? Yep, everybody have voted, yeah. May I have a motion for 12.1, special education placements, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Quick summary, the packet contained 40 meetings from the CPSC and 60 from the CSC, highlighted that there were four initial eligibility for the CPSC, of which three students were classified, two transfer students, they're gonna be continued with services. At the CSC, program reviews, three students were being declassified, and there are three initial eligibility's, two were deemed to be ineligible, and one student's gonna be classified. And in the packet, there were four outplacement students covered.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. I have a motion for 12.2, internal audit report.
Second.
As described in the minute in the agenda. We had a, do we have a second?
Yes.
I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry, I seconded.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment, reading the, the review of the inventory management by facilities and operations department, you know, just commending Elliot and his department on this work, I mean, you know, it's, it takes something to get that kind of a response from an auditor, and it shouldn't go unnoticed.
Absolutely.
You know, it's good, I think, you know, a good, good fiscal responsibility down the line is, is well worth noting, and appreciated.
Yes, in the, in the audit committee meeting, he was very effusive in his praise for the process that, that they have.
Yeah, I mean.
In facilities, so.
He's certainly taken some heat for the last, pardon the pun, in the last year, so it's good to, good to see some, some good response.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Close that, hang on.
I'll move the correction of action plan for the audit.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there wasn't a whole lot to do here, fortunately, 'cause the internal audit was so good, but it's good that we have a few things to tidy up on.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Action carried. Okay, now we have the first reading of board policies, and there's a number of them.
Thank goodness we don't actually have to read them out loud.
What's that?
I said, thank goodness we don't have to read them out loud.
No, yeah.
There's a lot here.
I was thinking of reading this, the titles, but there's, anyway. Any discussion on any of these? They all are, or most, no, I can't even say that.
You need a motion first?
Hmm? Yeah. I have a motion to.
First reading.
For 12.4, the first reading of the board policies, 1530, 4321, 4321.3, 4321.7, 4321.8, 4340, 5300 dot 10, 5300 dot 30, 5300 dot 60, 5300 dot 70, 5420, 9125.1, and 9540.
Aike, so moved.
Is there any discussion?
And just to be transparent, since, since there's a, a number of things on here, but code of conduct is part of this, this is first reading, so this will be discussed again next meeting.
That's correct.
For the second and final adoption, okay?
That's correct.
'Cause there's, I think there's other stuff in here that really weren't, that didn't, didn't, weren't mentioned earlier, because they're, they're not part of the code of conduct, so, we got other policies wrapped in here as well.
You got it?
Yeah, the only, I, you know, I will vote for this only in light of the fact that I hear that we may entertain some tweaks to this, and it's only the first reading, so I'm okay with that, we've certainly expressed our concerns, and again, since it's just first reading, and, you know, we may, you know, there may be some tweaks to the language, so.
You know, can I clarify something, especially before we leave tonight, because I was just, so, Aviva, is it, what I kept hearing you say is that we have the legal right. So my question is, regardless of whether or not the cellphone is in the policy or not in the policy, do we have that legal authority?
With reasonable suspicion, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
We've had it all along, it's not a change, so the attempt was to say we wanted people to be aware.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could call Tom and clarify that whether we have it in the policy or not in the policy.
I mean, I, I think I said that and he heard it, but he doesn't like that.
Okay.
You know, and, and I, you know, I hear that.
Okay.
But I think that the password suggestion is a good one, and that that's the language we're looking at, so that at least people know what their rights are. So again, it's more transparency that if, you know, that we don't have a right, you know.
Okay, so then, then there's no need to follow up, 'cause that was what I heard too, that you said, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Have a motion for 12.5, the recall teacher, Michael Ruela.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And we're back to public participation, may I have a motion to enter public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Once again, you have a chance? Okay. Should we write this date down?
Hit highlight.
No, no, we're on a roll here, wait. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 14.1, board subcommittee reports, we have any committee reports? I was away for two weeks, so I wasn't in here.
It was quiet.
Very quiet.
Yeah, noticed nothing went on.
All right.
It was empty slate.
Upcoming meetings. Let me just get these so I can read them. Okay, Monday, May 12, 2014, voter registration, the last date of registered to vote. You may register between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM at the administration office. Also, on Monday, May 12, 2014, there'll be a public hearing on the budget at 7:00 PM at the administration. Also, on Monday, May 12, 2014, there'll be a public hearing on the budget at 7:00 PM at the administration office. Wednesday, May 14, 2014, is a budget presentation, 6:30 PM at the Clinton Town Hall. That's on Center Road, officially in Reinbeck. Tuesday, May 20, 2014, is the vote on the 2014-15 proposed budget and board member election. That will be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Haviland Middle School.
And just to announce that during the budget vote, the HPTA is graciously sponsoring the Ice Cream Social and Book Fair. So thank you very much, HPTA.
Okay, I'm assuming since it's a budget presentation and not meet the candidates, there is no meet the candidates?
Yeah.
Me, I am, I am the candidate, okay. Okay. Well, there is no need for executive session? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.